Everyone to our June twenty-seventh recreation meeting for the month of June. And at this time, for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the City Council chambers and submit to staff as early in the meeting as possible. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Service as soon as possible prior to the meeting. May I have everyone stand for the pledge of the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, hello, Joe. Have the roll call, please.
May I have a roll call? Commissioner Cisson was with us ever so briefly, had to be excused because of a personal emergency. Commissioner Luna?
Present.
Commissioner Landos?
Present.
Vice Chair Pogonja was unable to join us tonight, and Chair Pastor?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Okay. Okay, may I have approval of the agenda for this meeting tonight? Approved. Aye, second?
Aye, second.
Okay, those in favor of the agenda do say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. And may I have approval for the minutes? Approved.
Aye, second.
Okay, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And moving on to the Director's Report.
Good evening, Chair Pastor, members of the Commission. The meat and potatoes of tonight's meeting all revolves around pickleball. And as you recall from one of our previous meetings, we actually discussed pickleball, how we were introducing it at Westlake. It's growing a little bit since, and we have a couple ambassadors of the Pickleball Association with us today. And with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Terry Chu, who is going to share his vision for pickleball in Daly City. Do more of a self-introduction if you'd like, Terry?
Oh, good evening.
Jerry, hello.
I'm a retired police officer from the city of Daly City. I served the city for thirty years. After retirement, I became hooked on this sport called pickleball from my friend Freddie Natarise. He convinced me to try the game, and I played it once, and it, history, here I am. I currently represent the USAPA as an ambassador for Daly City in San Mateo County. The goal is for us to introduce the sport to everyone and to promote the sport to members of the community, all age ranges from children all the way up to seniors. This is the one game that you can play with your children and your grandchildren.
Is there anything else?
Yes, I have a short slide presentation. I also have some of the equipment that we use, so that you may look at it and see what the sport is all about. I have some handouts that kind of give a short simplified instruction on how the game is played. And then, any questions that you may have, please don't hesitate to ask. Between Freddie and I, we should go to answer any of the questions that you have.
Would it be appropriate maybe to pass out some paddle and ball?
Sure.
I think a paddle and ball is probably good.
I think we could start playing here.
In actuality, we have the ability to set up the equipment right outside the rotunda, and you can hit a ball or two if you wish. That's how fast, that's how fast we can set the court up for you. And this is the portable net systems that we currently use at the Westlake Gym.
And I have, along with Terry Chu, seen somebody play in a suit and tie, so, you know, everyone's dressed appropriately for pickleball right now.
So if somebody can play in a suit and a tie, I think everybody can pretty much play in whatever clothes. Except, we want to make sure that you have good shoes, because we don't want you to fuck. Although, most people will say that the sport doesn't incur injuries, in actuality, in any kind of activity, you could hurt yourself. We just want to prevent anybody from getting hurt. Okay, so today, what I would like to go over is an overview of the sport. I want to go over some of the numbers, the explosive growth by the numbers. I want to give an example, best-in-class city example, St. George, Utah, East Naples, Florida, the city of Daly City's current status with pickleball, and the city of Daly City pickleball vision for the future. So pickleball is a real sport. The game was, did I, oh yeah, the video, we had to take the video out. It is an explosive sport. It's probably the fastest-growing sport in America today. The sport was invented by a US Congressman in Washington State fifty-five years ago. In two thousand and ten, there were a hundred thousand players. As of two thousand and fifteen, two point four six million players play this sport. This is according to the Sports and Fitness Industry Association report. And as of two thousand and eighteen, there's an indication that there are eight million players based on the current growth rate. Seniors are a big part of the sport, but kids are getting into it as well. Many middle schools, high schools, and universities have incorporated the sport into their curriculum. Known places to play pickleball in the US now exceed four thousand locations, up four hundred and fourteen percent since two thousand and ten. Nine hundred and twelve locations added in two thousand and fifteen, alone for an average of seventy-six new locations per month. Pickleball two thousand and fifteen Nationals, seven recap, with the open and senior open medal matches streaming live for the first time to a global audience, viewers tuning in from seventy-six countries and all fifty states. So in two thousand and fifteen, eight hundred and seven registered players, that's up from seven hundred and thirteen from two thousand and fourteen. There were two thousand and thirty-eight matches played, that's a thousand seven hundred and ninety-six matches up from two thousand and fourteen. Players from thirty-eight states and three provinces attended the event, twenty-six event sponsors. Okay, livestream and video-on-demand statistics as mid-May of two thousand and sixteen. Twenty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-nine highest single-day individual viewers, that's livestream, three hundred and ninety-one thousand eighty-four total views, and then unique viewers from all fifty states and viewers from a hundred and thirty-one countries. This sport is pretty much international now, and it's growing in popularity as we speak. The strong, we have a strong governing body. The USAPA is the main organization that controls the tournaments and provides any documentation, currently working on teaching guidelines, coaching guidelines, and the go-to, what's the word I'm looking for, the go-to group to go, to run the organization as club membership, not club membership, but association membership, similar to the USTA. There's also an international federation of pickleball, and they are the organization that has the international rulebook. Because as simple as the game is, there are some basic rules, how the ball is built, how the paddle is built, how the game is played, and then any changes to the rules of the game and how it's played will come through them. Okay, so best class of, best class example is St. George, Utah, their health and wellness focus. Population size of Utah is, St. George is seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen. They have twenty-four dedicated, oops, okay, twenty-four dedicated courts. They built twelve courts in two thousand and twelve, but soon became overcrowded due to the popularity of the sport. Plan started in two thousand and twelve to expand to twenty-four courts. Local players hosted a fundraiser tournament which raised a hundred thousand dollars due to matching agreement made by several prominent St. George business people who are also avid pickleball players. Today, the city runs clinics, small local tournaments, round robin tournaments, USAPA Western Regionals, as well as the Huntsman Senior Game Pickleball Multi-Day Tournament. These are the Huntsman stats. Six hundred and thirty-three players, they had fifteen, one thousand five hundred and thirty matches, thirty-four, members of thirty-four states plus two Canadian provinces were represented in the tournament. Some events sold out in under ten minutes, registration opened at midnight, and by twelve twenty AM, most of the events were sold out. Best-in-class example, East Naples, Florida. Population of East Naples is fifty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine. They have twenty-five dedicated courts. East Naples, Florida is economically disadvantaged area compared to Naples, Florida. Neighborhood scouts research show that this neighborhood has an income lower than sixty point seven percent of the US neighborhoods. Yet, East Naples went from zero permanent courts in two thousand and fourteen to twenty-five permanent courts and another twenty-three dual-use courts today. Combination of permanent and multi-use in the single location. I will show you an example of that later in the slideshow. It is the home of the US Open Pickleball Championships. In the inaugural year, two thousand and sixteen, attracted eight hundred players, and according to Donna Flata, Collier County Commissioner, the event raised over two million dollars in direct tourism spending. In two thousand and seventeen, the tournament is sold out at twelve thousand players. It has been extended to a seven-day tournament, which again brought significant tourism dollars to the community. Recently opened, the US Pickleball Academy, Simone Jardine, pickleball pro and former head coach for the Michigan State Women's Tennis Team, was recruited as the lead instructor. Daly City current situation. Daly City, I believe, has a population of over a hundred thousand. We currently have zero dedicated courts, but we do have the only three dedicated indoor pickleball courts on the peninsula. Let's see, we started indoor pickleball October fourth, two thousand and sixteen, at the Pacelli Gym. Gym play two days a week, and in the fall, gym play will be expanded to five days a week. We can go over more of the scheduling later, if you have any questions on that. Okay, as an example, the city of Henderson lost in Nevada Senior Games in October two thousand and fifteen tournament to the Plaza Hotel and Casino in Las Vegas. And the reason why they lost it is because they didn't have the courts available. Las Vegas had the courts, and they actually built the courts. Although it's different than Daly City, it shows that Arizona has a similar population size in Daly City. We could, we could, in theory, host a national tournament in our city if we were to build dedicated outdoor courts. Let's see, in Las Vegas, they hosted the first USAPA Regional Tournament in two thousand and fifteen. Las Vegas lost the Western Regional Tournament this year to St. George because St. George updated its Little Valley Pickleball Complex to twenty-four courts. If Daly City were to decide to create, to build dedicated courts, we have a group of dedicated volunteers that would be willing to help with starting and putting on a local tournament. And if we get the word out, because the Western Regional Ambassador, the boss over us, Steve Sutton, he actually lives in San Jose, and if we were to build facilities, we could host the USAPA Western Regionals here in the Bay Area. We could beat San Francisco, because San Francisco doesn't have any courts yet, any dedicated courts yet. Here's an example of four, okay, one, two, three, four, five dilapidated tennis courts, the lower picture, and then on the upper picture, you'll see what it looks like with one, two, three, four, five, six. We could put eight pickleball courts and two tennis courts. So we could share the same area. So we don't want to take away anything from tennis, but we can share with tennis players the same area. Although pickleball players will be spoiled if they had their own dedicated courts, it makes things a little bit easier for people to come and play without having to bring their own nets to set up. But in this example here, what could be done, we could do that here in Daly City as well in the same area. And just using as an example, the Westlake tennis courts at the, what's the, the Westlake Community Center? Senior Center. Currently, there are four courts there that do need resurfacing. In that same area, you could divide, you could still keep two tennis courts, and we could build six permanent pickleball courts. And then, we could add temporary, we could add the lines to the tennis courts, or what they call blended lines, so that the tennis players can still play. And I think there's enough room that if the USTA wanted to use it for sanctioned tournaments, they could still use the courts. But if we wanted to host a pickleball tournament with the blended, with the lines already painted and bringing the temporary net system, we could add the numbers. So we could, I think, what was the number, we could put sixteen courts? We could put sixteen pickleball courts in the same area.
Sixteen.
So if you look at the number, okay, so pickleball, most of the time, we play it with doubles. So you got four players on each pickleball court. Whereas in tennis, if you only have two tennis courts, you only have, you know, one, two, you have eight. And then, but you just go by the number of courts. So the number of people you'll get outdoors in that same area are gonna triple, based on just the number of courts and the number of players. So let's see, the city can place up to sixteen courts, so that's sixty-four players with sixteen courts. In the same space as four tennis courts, with four tennis courts, you will have anywhere from eight to sixteen players. So that's simple numbers, sixty-four players versus sixteen, which enables a given park to serve more of its citizens in the same square footage. Pickleball is experiencing explosive growth. According to several articles, tennis is in a decline. One example, in Forbes, August two thousand and fifteen, American tennis deep decline necessitates a shift. Other sources show that tennis growth is flat rather than declining. Pickleball is unlike other sports in that it could have fun almost immediately, and lessons are not required. Most people can play pickleball competently within a few weeks of picking up a paddle, and even if they don't have a paddle sport in their background. The city, Daly City, has one USAPA ambassador, that's myself. There are usually one ambassador per one hundred thousand population. So Daly City is blessed with people who are passionate about the sport and who will volunteer their time to host novice training clinics at no cost in addition to the city. It has a nearby ambassador, Freddie, he's, again, he's a former USTA-ranked player, and he's currently, recently been ranked as a four-oh player in the USAPA, and he's a current tennis coach at Westmore High School. So for the citizens who want to become competitive, instruction would be available here in the city. So it'll run any, the whole gambit, from beginner to advanced player. I, by the way, I'm also the assistant volleyball coach at Westmore. That's how he got, that's how I found his job. I volunteer, he gets paid. Let's see, so in, for envision of Daly City, if we had sixteen courts, if we can get sixteen courts, that would be great. Of course, thirty-two courts would be better. We actually are working with staff at Westmore High School to introduce pickleball into their curriculum, hopefully within their PE program. If not, we're gonna attempt to start a pickleball club at the high school. And the equipment will be provided by me. I've offered the, I offered the use of my personal equipment to start their program and to see if it can, if they like it, if it grows, then I can hopefully do fundraising for them so that they can get the equipment. So, any questions? All we want to do is go out and play. This picture here is just a sample of one of our events that we held. Freddie and I are the founding, we are the founding members of the Golden Gate Pickleball Club. We're trying to legitimize our group. We are currently working on our five oh one C three status and incorporating, getting incorporated. We, we're implementing fundraisers in order so that we can pay the federal and state fees to ask for nonprofit status. So we're working on that right now. Freddie is also a sponsored player. He's sponsored by the company called ProLite. We also, through the kindness of Engage Paddle Company, although I purchased the equipment, they actually gave me huge support by giving me all their high-end equipment and not their entry-level equipment. So they're really excited about what's happening out here on the West Coast, because the company's based in Florida, and hopefully we can have pickleball grow in Daly City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does he want to introduce himself? I know. When he says he, you know.
Hello, my name is Freddie Natarise.
Hey, Freddie, how are you? Welcome.
One of the, like Terry said, I'm one of the ambassadors for San Francisco. We started a group, Golden Gate Pickleball Club, in January this year. We're up to sixty members now. My thing is, I love the game. I played tennis for thirty years. Due to two shoulder injuries in my rotator cuff, my doctor says, no more pickle, no more tennis for you. So my daughter, my daughter sent my kid, they've been playing tennis for a long time. My daughter goes, Dad, your surgery is done, let's go play, let's go play tennis. So I'm out there trying to get my forehand in, and she got mad at me, go, Dad, you can't even hit the ball anymore. I go, I'm sorry, sweetheart. So I went out there, practiced on my own, and this gentleman, Wellington, I'll introduce him to you later, in the future, he goes, hey, you want to play pickleball? What the heck's pickleball? And he showed it to me, goes, we went to this gym in San Francisco, gave me the paddle, gave me the ball, he goes, you're a tennis player, you should know how to play this game. So he gave me the ball, he's handed me the ball, I hit it and I missed, and that's the beginning of it, man. Tell me, I love this game. I, I can, we can, we can, we can show you this game, I can teach you this game in seven minutes, and you'll be able to play the game. You can teach your kids, you can teach your wives, your brothers, sisters, everybody. My wife plays the game. In fact, we just played this weekend. My lovely, my wife enjoys the game. She's not even a, she doesn't even like paddle sports or racket sports. So my, my goal, our goal is to implement it from, what I want to do is implement it to the kids. That's my goal. What I want to do is start the program with Westmore High School, get the pickleball club in there, and eventually get an inner, inner-school pickleball tournament, which they are now doing in the East Coast, the West Coast, the Midwest, and that's, that's what we want to do. You know, we just, we spoke to Steve Sutton, who's the regional director for the Western Division, and he is looking for a place to do the Western Tournament. And when we told him our plans, he goes, Freddie, if you could get Daly City in there, well, we can, we can make it worldwide. I mean, we can invite everybody. Simone Jardine, the one that, Terry, she's in the same team as I am with ProLite, she's the number one, she's the number one female player in pickleball in the country. I sent him an email, I sent her an email, she says, whenever you're ready, I'll come down and play for you guys. You know, Sarah Ensbury, who's also the number one, number two female, we keep in touch with each other, she goes, when are you guys gonna do a pickleball in the Bay Area? And the only thing we tell, we're working on it, and once we're in there, we'll invite you guys.
Great, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Exciting times. You know, you have, about maybe two months ago, when we were, maybe three months ago, when we were first introduced to pickleball, and we were mentioned that it's Thursday night, Thursday afternoons between eleven and two at the Pacelli Gym. Took me a while to find my time to get over there, but I eventually went there to check it out. And I guess this one, one volunteer or one participant noticed that I was just standing there with my hands in my pocket, watching. And she just walked up with a paddle, and goes, let's play. I go, play? I don't even know the beginning of this. So we just spent about ten minutes paddling back and forth with each other without the net in front of us, and just to get used to the routine and the movement of the ball after it hits the ground. And it was just fun watching all ages playing, playing the pickleball. And maybe a month later, I was channel surfing on ESPN or something like that, and there was a national tournament, it was a championship tournament on pickleball. I go, really? It was just introduced to me, you know, to one of the Daly City residents here on pickleball. And I started to watch it for a good portion, and it can get pretty aggressive at that level. So, but it's another life sport that's out there for folks that have, you know, had the injury, that still want to continue to be active. So I'll get back there to take a look at it again and see if I can get there a little bit more frequently.
If you look at that picture, I'm on the left-hand side. Can you see my stomach?
Yeah.
And if you see right now, I lost twenty-seven pounds playing in this game.
Oh, wow.
And although I'm not a big man, when I retired, I had gained, I was up to one seventy. And since playing, the first day I played was August twentieth of last year, I've lost, I'm back, I've lost over fifteen pounds down to, I'm down to like one fifty, one fifty-five now.
That's good.
It's been, it's been helpful. The benefit is the workout. But when you're playing the game, it's not a workout. You're playing.
Just for fun.
If you're having fun, the benefit is the workout.
Yeah.
And then the secondary benefit is the socialization aspect. Sorry.
The benefit is socialization. For example, people come to play, they're new, and they're old friends. Oh my God, I haven't seen you in twenty years. And they come and they play the game, and we introduce it. And unlike other sports, when somebody like yourself, like you said you were checking it out, and then the lady came up and asked you, hey, do you want to play? That's what we do. If you're there, you're, we're completely, and we don't do it just here in Daly City. When I go to San Mateo, San Mateo High School, they offer a gym, indoor gym time. New players come in, I reach out to them and say, hey, have you ever played before? So part of our duties as ambassadors is to, let's, let's play. So San Bruno, we do it, I do it at San Bruno, we do it in Foster City. Foster City has six brand-new dedicated courts. In fact, that's where we're headed to. And forgive us for our attire, because we have another meeting after this to go down and meet some other players.
Great, great.
So, but it's, it's a fast-growing sport, and I hope we can get this thing really off the ground, and if we beat San Francisco, we strike while the iron's hot. You know, get it done before they...
There you go. Thank you, Derek. Great presentation. Anything?
I am interested in trying this game out. It sounds like fun. I mean, just the fact that I'm moving as well. So you mentioned that you went to Westmore High School?
I, I grew up in San Francisco, but as a police officer, I was assigned high, Westmore High School as my beat school, just before I left. And so my daughter attended Westmore, and she was on the volleyball team, and I coached my own children for volleyball as, and so I fell in love with the game. So I had the opportunity to ask Coach Rex, he's, Rex is the campus supervisor at Westmore. supervisor at Westmore.
Yeah.
And he's a real, I love his coaching philosophy. It's, it's like coaching a family. And so because of that, I asked if I could be, can I volunteer to be his assistant coach? For many years, he had no coach. It was him by himself. And I could never understand how he could do it all by himself. So I offered to be his assistant coach, and that's how I got involved with Westmore. As I, when I retired, and I, again, I had to wait till my daughter graduated 'cause she didn't want me to be the coach at Westmore when she was there. So, I, I, he said, "Yeah, come on on." And I've been there for four seasons now. And then we're gonna start our fifth season this year. I actually helped out this morning, we had workouts this morning. So.
So that's actually...
That's how I got involved. So it's my thing to give back to the community. For so many years, I, I've, thirty years, I've been here since nineteen eighty-three, and, you know, serving the community in my capacity. So now that's, Lifetime is on the shelf, and I get to reminisce once in a while. And then now I, this is my new journey, this pickleball. I didn't mention it before, but when Daly City's program started, I was able to get it done in forty-six days. From the first day I played pickleball to the day that we opened the gym for the first time for new players, forty-six days. From October twentieth to, I mean, August twentieth to October fourth. I was able to get the financing, we were able to work with, getting the financing, purchasing the equipment. The equipment was purchased with the help of the Daly City PAL. Through our connections, we were able to buy the equipment at a discounted rate from Engage Paddle Company. They provided the nets, four paddles, and four balls at a reasonable price. And then they gave us some upgrade in equipment. And so we were able to get all that without a cost to the city.
Fantastic.
And then what happened, it was a misfortune that happened at the gym where the floor was burnt in the Pacelli Gym due to an accident of an electrical fire, cause of burning. So the city wanted, needed to repair the floor. And so although they didn't need to put the dedicated court lines, they were, they were able to paint the lines on the floor. So when you go to the gym, it's a full-blown, correct, two-inch-wide pickleball court. It's not a badminton court. Badminton court, same, same size dimensions except the, what they call the non-volley zone line, is at six and a half feet from the net, whereas pickleball is seven feet. And that's the only difference in the court size.
Wow, that's fantastic.
So we're the only ones with a dedicated indoor courts. People love it. Because the line is very important in the game, whether the ball's in or out, and whether you step into the kitchen or not. It's the only time you'll hear me say, "Get out of the kitchen."
Um, what were the hours again at?
Okay, so currently, because of the summertime youth camp, and we had attempted to have a pickleball youth camp, but I, there's not a lot of people that know about pickleball, so we were unable to get the numbers for this year. Next year, we have different ideas for the program, so that we can do a youth program next year. But in the fall, we'll get Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Pacelli Gym from eleven to two. And the city's been gracious enough to provide another venue at the same time. So we will have Mondays and Fridays, eleven to two, at the War Memorial, and Wednesday night at the War Memorial. And then what's unique about the War Memorial is that it will have six indoor available courts. And that one Wednesday night hopefully will allow us, will allow the younger folks to come. And what I mean younger, those that are still working. That's, you know, 'cause the working people wanna play too, but they can only play on the weekends unless you have available, available location to play at night. So hopefully those numbers will go up. And I wanna cater the Wednesday night towards the more advanced play. And what's unique about the War Memorial, excuse me, the War Memorial Gym is that it's a tiered gym system. There's an upper gym and a lower gym. The upper gym sits behind glass walls, so you can have highly competitive games with advanced players. And then the, the younger player, newer players can come and watch and not interfere with their gameplay because you're behind a glass wall. And then there's tables and chairs there so that they can sit down and watch and, and learn by watching. So that's, we have a really unique opportunity with that, with that facility. Wes, currently, we play Saturday morning and Sunday nights at San Mateo High School. But the problem with San Mateo High School is that they have a drop-down wall that divides the courts, and it's, it's not, it's, doesn't allow for really good play because it's the distance between the back line, the baseline and the wall, the drop-down wall interferes with play. And also interferes, interferes with vision. But it's the only, if, if you're the only place that's open for indoors at that time, that's the only place you can play. But the War Memorial is, it would be a really, it's gonna be a good location. And hopefully staff will have the numbers available. I think we were averaging twenty-five to, between twenty-five and thirty players every Tuesday and Thursday. And they're dedicated players. They started to buy their own equipment, and they're playing on the outdoor courts on their own now. So it's, it's growing. We want you guys to come out and play.
Yeah, I'd love to try. I'm a tennis fan, so.
Yeah.
And racquetball and all of them, so.
You're gonna love this game.
Yeah.
You're gonna love this game.
There you go. Well, terrific. Well, thank you for the presentation, Terry, and looking forward to getting out there on a, was it?
Well, currently, we'll be Friday nights.
Okay.
I think this Friday, this coming Friday, it's gonna, we'll have six to nine at the West, at the Pacelli. That's our last Friday. And then in July, we're gonna move to the War Memorial, Wednesday night and Friday night.
This Friday.
This Friday night, we'll be at the Pacelli. And then in July, is it July this Friday? No, next Friday.
Yeah.
We'll be at the War Memorial, starting Wednesday. I think that's July fifth. It's July fifth.
Seven.
Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so July fifth, Wednesday, we'll be at the War Memorial.
Is there an established website that you have set up to kinda give us the general public the, your hours?
We currently, well, it's on, I believe it's on the city's website as to the time for, through Park and Rec. I do post the times on our Facebook presence. We do have a Facebook page for Golden Gate Pickleball Club.
Okay.
And I currently have a, just pickleball contact list. I have about a hundred and ten emails currently to get the information out. And then we had flyers during the summer, before the summer program started, so I will Facebook that. And I, I'm sure that the Park and Rec has that on their site already.
Okay. Great, great.
Are we gonna see you Friday?
This Friday?
Please.
I'm gonna be there. I'm planning right now in my head to invite so many people.
And we will, we will provide all the equipment.
Please.
We, we have...
I think I'm available too, so.
Please.
It's gonna be a happy Friday.
The only day this week is the Friday.
Yeah, Friday night is at the Pacelli Gym.
Well, Pacelli Gym, okay.
For this Friday.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you again, folks.
And through the chair, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our only official agenda item this evening was the pickleball presentation, but I wanted to tag on to that. I did mention it earlier. Several months ago, I think we talked about the city is undertaking a facilities assessment.
Mm-hmm.
Very intense undertaking with every single building, every structure in the city by a team of highly skilled, trained engineers and plumbers and electricians. And that is gonna produce a document, probably by the end of August, probably a five, six-hundred-page document, basically a report card about the state of health of our facilities. And it's gonna prioritize, you know, immediate emergency kind of repairs that we need to make, short-term and then long-term strategies. Once that is done, we are going to embark on a, a new phase of developing a parks master plan. So the facilities is, is one plan, and then the parks will be a separate. Now, the facilities, because the facilities already exist, there wasn't a community component. It was, you know, bringing in trained professionals to assess the buildings. With the parks master plan, we do want to bring this body and a stakeholder group from the community. And it's a perfect op, the timing couldn't be better. The perfect opportunity, you know, if Terry wants to be at the table to advocate and lobby for pickleball. Because certainly, if you've been out to our facilities, I can tell you that both Gellert and Westlake, they are in dire need of resurfacing, and that might be a perfect opportunity to reconfigure the striping for pickleball, much like we did at, at the Pacelli Gym when we resurfaced the floor there. So. He's, he's got a little bit of a magic touch. His timing's been really good.
Yeah.
And he said, well, these days before, for our first meeting, before you actually had people, people playing pickleball, and then, and then, you know, we went from the tape stripes to, you know, resurface gym floor with pickleball stripes. So things are working quickly and, and yeah, who knows? Maybe if, if the planets line up and he keeps that goal in touch, we might be hosting a western regional pickleball event one day. Anyway, I just wanted to add that tag to the end of his presentation.
Great, great. Thank you, Jill.
And that is it for our reports this evening.
Want to, commissioners report anything? Do you wanna, anyone want on this, wants to share between our last meeting and this that might have occurred, maybe any event you might have attended or?
At the moment, no.
Okay. I just wanna share that, I wanna thank Mayor Sylvester on, on the meet and greet with the other commissioners going over the Brown Act. This was at the beginning of June that this was happening, here at the training room on the first, lower floor here. So thank you to the mayor for setting that up. And I had a chance to meet other commissioners in different capacities. So it was a nice, nice event. And that's it for, for that part of the sharing.
I, I don't have anything.
We can move on to announcements?
Yes, announcements and communications.
And the first one, you know, is, you may be spending a lot of time at Westlake Park on Friday because Friday, this Friday, June thirtieth, is the annual Independence Day celebration. And it's co-hosted by the city, Daly City Department of Library and Recreation Services and the nonprofit group, the supporters of the Dolger Senior Center Incorporated. It's always a lot of fun. It's probably one of the best-attended events at the senior center all year. In addition to some wonderful barbecue food, there is entertainment slated throughout the day. And I've got the latest and greatest. And I think we talked about this at our last meeting and I, and...
Yes.
I'd mentioned that the Alto Loma Middle School Jazz Band was going to be there. They have withdrawn, but that's okay. The show's gonna go on. Because we do have the Foggy Coast Kids from Pacifica. That is a bluegrass band out of Pacifica. And then we're really grateful because on a very short notice, and I'm talking about, we called yesterday to inquire if the Daly City All-Stars could perform. And they agreed to have at least a splinter group of, of the larger Daly City All-Stars Band. If you're not familiar with them, they have been around for more than one hundred years. They're a group of musicians that get together and in fact rehearse at the Dolger Cafe. They're all musicians that sight read, so they distribute the music, grab their instruments, and rip through some songs. So they're all very talented musicians, and I understand they've got about eight that will come in at the last minute and substitute for the Alto Loma Junior High School Jazz Ensemble. There's gonna be raffle, and lots of vendors will be represented. I know High Cap of San Mateo County's gonna be out there, the Daly City Public Library Associates will be out there, the Veterans Group of Daly City will be out there, along with a couple other nonprofits. And of course, the Dolger Senior Center supporters themselves. Should be a wonderful event. Hope to see you there. And then coming up, the following, a week from Saturday will be, this is a new twist too, and it's something we've done for years, the Summer Youth Recreation Program Challenge of the Parks. Years past, we've done that as part of the, the summer camp during the week on a Friday. And, and for those not familiar with the concept, so we have Summer Youth Recreation Program, the big one at Westlake, pretty big one at Gellert, Westmore, Hillside, and March Bank. And so it's a little friendly competition between the various sites, and they converge on one location. And this is going to be Saturday, July seventh, at the TR Policita Field and Gym on Market Street. And, and I believe there will be food there too. I think we'll be barbecuing out there. And then later in the month of July, the Summer Youth Recreation Program Talent Show. And it's gonna be a Saturday evening. The doors are gonna open at six o'clock at the Pacelli Events Center. And then another really fun thing that Daly City lifeguards like to participate in every year is the Lifeguard Games. And Lifeguard Games two thousand seventeen will be in August, August sixth, out at the Robert Livermore Community Center Pool in Livermore, California. And then I, I hate to think this far in advance because it seems like we just got summer going, but then we'll have an end-of-summer luau at the Geomona Pool on Saturday, August twelfth. So those are our announcements.
I have a question. Is that really Saturday, July seventh, Saturday?
Is that day wrong?
Or is it Friday?
Oh, yeah. That's a Friday.
Oops.
Yeah, so just for the correction for the public, so the July seventh is actually Friday.
I believe it is a Saturday.
Yes.
You know what, I will, I'll make sure we get that posted.
And I'm looking at it's only on July.
Oh, sorry. Proofread these agendas a little closer.
It's okay.
Confirmed, July seventh is a Friday.
Okay.
So we're saying that event should stay Saturday, July eighth?
I think, I think they are moving it to a Saturday. I think there's gonna be a library component. But I will double-check and get back to all of you and make sure we have updated on the website.
Fantastic. Thank you.
We're actually in week four. I can tell you right now, we're in week four of our summer recreation programs, and they're going great.
Fantastic.
My kids happen to be doing the Aqua Camp at Geomona Pool this week, and it's full to capacity and having a great time. And it's one of those, the kids have a lot of fun, but they also learn an important life skill, learning how to swim.
That's it, that's it. We're at that point where we shared the announcements, any of, and we didn't have any cards turned in, but we do have a visitor here. Did you have anything you'd like to share with us today? Okay. Thank you. Didn't wanna overlook it. And only, only comment I'd like to share is that, you know, with, with San Francisco's Children's Park have been vandalized with a burn of their, of their play structure, possibly our, our structures that are of similar construction can kinda like be on a watch list with our local police department now from, you know, beyond the lookout, since that's already fresh in our mind of what happened.
In fact, you might remember, we, we were victims of this not that long ago at Dave Rowe Park out in the Bay Shore neighborhood.
That's right.
Burned all the playground equipment. It's, you know, plastic, and I guess if you're determined to ignite it, it burns and is completely destroyed.
So, yeah, that just came to mind as I was thinking of other things to share, but that's fresh. But other than that, if there's anything else that we'd like to bring to the table?
We hope to see you this Friday at the senior Dolgers.
Yeah, there you go.
Come, everyone.
Yes. And that being said, do I get a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion approved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting's now closed. Thank you.